County Commissioners now in session for this regular meeting Tuesday, September 16th. It's good to see everyone here this morning. We're going to get started. Commissioner Kreen, can you lead us in the invocation and the pledge?
Yes, sir. Dear heaven Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for putting us in this position that we are in to help serve and lead this great county. Lord, we ask you to be with the families and the people that are in need for healing. We ask you for speedy recovery. We ask you for continued protection and guidance in everything we do, but to keep you first in what is for the best interest of this county. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberating and justice for all.
All right, before we approve the agenda, I would like to remind everyone today, just as a matter of taking some personal time here, remind everyone today in your thoughts and in your prayer time to remember our sheriff. He's undergoing a procedure today for a kidney transplant, and I'm sure he would appreciate your prayers. All right, do we have anything to add to this agenda or amend?
Nothing on my, nothing on my answer, I'm sure.
Mr. Chairman, I have one action item to request the board to consider authorizing an executive session to consider the recently filed Burt Harris lawsuit.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, we've got some people coming in today to talk on the community-wide communication stuff that we're going to be letting on later on, some of it. And there may be some people in here that wants to speak at that time of the meeting. Would you mind recognizing them if they want to speak on this specific?
I don't, I don't mind at all. If they would, just go ahead and fill out a speaker card and give it to Mr. Merle, even though we've already started the meeting. That way I won't forget.
Yeah. In fact, maybe, maybe we could get them the problems with the communications down at Howard apartment.
Yes, ma'am.
Do it better than what we got.
And so, I would also recommend that we amend the agenda for what you discussed with me. You have something on your report that's time-sensitive? That's not reported that way on the agenda?
Yes, sir, I do. We have a scheduled nine, 10 consideration of a resolution to, which is a necessary step for the land swap with Duke Energy.
Right. So, those are the two things we're talking about amending on this agenda? Do we have approval of the agenda as it's amended?
No move, Mr. Chairman.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Sanders, second by Commissioner Amerson. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. Up next, we're paying the county's bills and approving the minutes from the last couple of meetings.
Seven seconds.
All right, so we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Kreen, second by Commissioner Ward. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. Now to public comments, Mr. Strickland.
Yes, sir.
Would please go forward, state your name for the record, and you have five minutes, sir.
Yes, sir.
I'm Milton Strickland. I'm a resident of Apalachicola. I'm a lifelong, part-time, full-time commercial fisherman. I'm a retired State of Florida Criminal Justice Personnel, and I'm, I'm here to, before the board, to officially request that they be established a partnership between the private sector, primarily commercial, but also recreational oystering, or what I call non-commercial, because people are not going out there to have fun, they're getting oysters to eat. But just something like, that could be, you know, y'all, y'all would establish the rules. I got some ideas, like at least once a month, and then the, it'd be like, of course, you'd have to have your tongs, but it would be set up like you, you only do one tonging at the time, and then everything gets raked over and you document, like, I'm concerned on the part of the bay that they're not wanting to open, that their muscles grow on this end of the bay, and if you don't break and break that stuff up, you're not actually helping, because like our property in southeast Alabama, that we had a plant of two roses, and one of them, you know, wasn't dead, but it wasn't doing nothing. So, I dug it up and was burning, so I put, I didn't mean to put, but I put hot ash air, so this thing's dead now for sure, and now it's beautiful. You know, because there are certain things, when you do it right, there's a benefit to it, you know? And I think that's kind of, people are missing out on the fact that when you, and another thing, a bag limit can be a problem, because say, for instance, this thing here is ridiculous, like only opening our bay for two months, and, and then like a lottery for people that want to go get some dates, so somebody's going to get left out, you know? I just don't see how that's right. But for instance, like, you know, if you, if you say that the bay opens up and there's a, say, a two or three bag limit, and you've worked two, two and a half hours, that's not a day's work. And then you're only hurting consumers, and really, I feel like I shouldn't have to be here on the consumer's behalf, but you take Florida Department of Agriculture and Consumer Services, where are they at? You know what I'm saying? I mean, you know, and why I think it's so important to find out from a different view, not, you know, State of Florida, but, you know, and y'all can totally set it up, you know, and I'm, I volunteer, or y'all can have other people do it, but we really need to know, really, what's out there, particularly on a part of the bay they don't really plan on opening. And another thing, I don't think they've actually, I'm not aware of where they did any, on what they plan on not opening any restoration, you know, that's kind of a problem. Why wasn't there restoration? You know, that's, you know, that's kind of a problem there, you know? And the Miles is where a lot of times, you know, people weren't making a lot of money, but they would come from East Point to make a living, you know. We're oystermen, they're not getting rich, we know we're never going to get rich. It's not about that. It's about doing what we want to do, make a living, and provide, you know, a product for consumers, including ourselves. And actually, it's probably going to be not allowed for, if you're one of the ones, you know, that you get to go oystering commercially, you probably won't even be allowed to get oysters to eat, you know, and stuff like that. That's, that's just no common sense. So, I'm just requesting y'all to at least consider establishing, and once or twice a month, possibly, I know things don't happen right away, but like October, November, and December, at least three months, and it could be like a reported, you know, a tong full, how many legal oysters, where you were located, pictures, and if any of y'all had any, you know, doubts or something about, like if I'm one that was picked, I would say, I'll take you out there and show you myself, you know what I'm saying? This, and I mean, I'm busy, I'm working on another homie on in southeast Alabama, but this is very important to me, and it, and this, it should be important to generations beyond today, you know? And those oysters were there before there was even a State of Florida. And so, that's a problem. And, I mean, if there ain't nothing there, like, they're, you know, they're not viable oysters to harvest, that's one thing, I can accept that. But this is, I was, you know, oyster through the closure after the bad hurricanes, it was totally different. This is something different. This is, they, they opened it up pretty soon, wasn't many oysters, but it was beautiful oysters, and you made a living, and it got better with, and, and I believe, you know, I was oystering when they closed it. The fifteen or so boats that was working are oystermen, I believe they weren't the ones that kind of just went out there and didn't care, wanted to make, they done went on, because it got to where it was just a living, you know, and, and it's just, the boats do need to be spread out, you know? And they're, and the bag limit thing, if you're catching the legal oysters, that is the bag limit. You're not going to get so many, you know that, because your big percentage is going back over, and that's a good thing, that's not all bad. And so, that's, you know, just, I would like y'all to consider that. And, and it could be, like anybody that wanted to participate, they probably, commercially, they would need to be a current oysterman who was, you know, licensed and legal at the time that the bay closed, you know? But, but anyway, if y'all would consider that, because I just think it's really important, because I don't think we should have to just go by what they say.
Yes, sir.
Because, you know, it's just, I just want y'all to consider that.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Strickland.
Okay.
Ms. Maxwell.
Good morning. Michelle Maxwell, clerk of court. The clerk's office is authorized by law to pay into the clerk's fine and forfeiture fund all unclaimed monies deposited or collected. A list was published in the Apalachicola Times, and pursuant to law, proof of publication is to be filed and reported in the minutes of the county commission. The list totaled $240 and represented sixteen checks that were never cashed. The charge for the advertisement was $16.31, and I've also attached the proof of publication, and I just needed to get this information into the minutes. That's it, you don't have to vote on this. Just information purposes, yes.
All right, anything else, clerk Maxwell?
That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, anyone here from Jennifer's office, or she buzzing? She had a report, but there was no action items on it. So, Commissioners, if you have anything you need to discuss, Ms. Sanders, feel free to contact her. Mr. Johnson.
Good morning, Commissioners. I do have some action items for today. I guess we can go through them individually. The first one is, on September 10th, the TDC Board voted to recommend approval of a request from the Camp Gordon Johnson Museum for a museum infrastructure grant through the TDC for up to $24,595. This grant is for lighting and display upgrades, signs, utility equipment, and for the grounds, and other equipment.
All right.
So move.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Ward.
I do have a comment, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Do we have a second?
I second it.
Oh, I didn't hear you, sorry. A second by Commissioner Sanders. Go ahead, Commissioner Ward.
I just want to say that Camp Gordon Johnson, I believe, was one of the first recipients when we started this, this museum infrastructure grant. So, this is, just goes to show that this is our tourism dollars, that hard work for our museums and other things in the, in the county that we can start using money for. And now with the statute change, I'm hoping we can use it for a lot more things, like infrastructure. So, thank you.
All right, any other discussion before we vote? All in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous.
And the second thing is, on September 10th, 2025, the TDC Board voted to recommend approval of a request from the City of Apalachicola for the construction of Phase One of the V Pier Fishing Pier for up to $500,000. This is a long time coming, and proud to be able to bring it to y'all now.
So move.
This is board.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Kreen, second by Commissioner Ward. Commissioner Kreen?
Go ahead. Mr. Solomon, have we ascertained how many phases it's going to be?
Two phases, Commissioner.
I can remember it was two or three.
Yes, sir, it's two phases. Currently, that's what we're looking at, the way Bree had broke it down for the city, being two phases. So, that's, like I said, this is a long time coming. We appreciate y'all.
It has been. Thank you.
Any other discussion? I would remind the Commissioners that this request from the city is a reimbursable request. They have to spend the money and give the county the invoice, and then they can get reimbursed.
Correct.
So, it is a little bit different than some of the others that are on this, this list today. Seeing no further discussion, all in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous.
And just for House, Mr. Chairman, the Camp Gordon Johnson, and also the ones later on, are all reimbursable, it's the only one, just, you know, the county. The next one is county request. The TDC Board vote, voted to recommend approval of the request from the Franklin County for the following improvements to the sports arenas. Would y'all like individually these, Mr. Chairman?
We'd all three of those.
All three? The DW Wilton Sports Arena batting cage lighting, $6,220.28. The Kendrick Sports Arena batting cage lighting, $16,619.98. And then the DW Wilson Sports Arena Musco Lighting System, $998,900.
Pleasure to the board.
Second.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Amerson, second by Commissioner Kreen. Any discussion?
I do.
Yes.
Seems like a lot of money for that Musco, but it's not. It's worth the money. And I, I know some of the Commissioners has it on their phones, that they can turn off the lights at the field. I'm not going to be responsible for that, I'm saying, sir. I don't, I don't do that, and I'm just suggesting that to you, Commissioner Amerson, so.
I will say, I do have it on my phone, and I have somebody that'll, 10 o'clock at night, will text me wanting to turn the lights at the basketball court, but I do it, because I'd rather our kids be doing something productive like that than doing other things. So, I don't mind, I don't mind it.
But I'm glad that-
It is a nice feature, though, for sure.
It is. And I'm glad the lighting system is coming to DW Wilson, because it's a good one. It's a good one. You pay, you pay a lot of money for it, but it's worth the money.
With this, we'll now have it at all of our parks, too.
Well, y'all been driving Cadillacs for three years, and I've been in the Pinto.
Oh, come on. I'll take a Pinto any day.
Any other discussion before we vote? All in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous.
All right. In the final action item, I have Commissioners, on August 13th, we had to wait till the budget gets closer. The TDC Board voted to recommend approval of the list, the 25, 26, small, large event grants, and the museum grant recipients. It's total of $255,500.
No move.
A motion to approve by Commissioner Sanders.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Kreen. Any discussion, Commissioners? All in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. All right.
And, Mr. Chairman, the last thing, of course, on the report that I had was, so we can go ahead and announce, the TDC will be holding a speaking event on November 10th at 8:00 a.m. here with a motivational hospitality speaker, Simon Bailey. And it's going to be a very good event. We, you know, have it for right at 100 people, maybe a little over, but it's going to be a great event. You have witnessed his-
Yes.
-speaking event before, and I think it's going to be a wonderful thing to boost our providers and our employees of what tourism means to Franklin County, and how it affects not just me, but we, so.
Yep, I think it's going to be good. We've been several years trying to get him, and not only did he have something clear on schedule, but we got him for about 45% of what he normally charges. So, we're going to be able to, so Commissioners, just to make sure you're aware, we're talking about hosting this event for up to 100 of our local TDC vendors and providers, and it's, in other words, they're not paying a dime to come to this. The TDC's doing it. The TDC's doing it.
Business owners, their managers, even if they wanted their front desk personnel to come, we want, you know, everybody can benefit from this, including all of y'all, to what it means to, um, be involved in the hospitality industry and be supported by tourism.
He's really good.
And the last thing that's not on here, I think I've messaged all of you, um, two Wednesdays ago, after the meeting we had here, Visit Florida contacted me, and I have been appointed to the marketing committee of Visit Florida. So it's a group of twelve in the entire state, so it's a pretty big honor to be picked.
Congratulations.
Good job.
Thank you.
We're gonna clap if y'all wanna clap, but please don't do that. You'll clap, clap. It's all good.
We're trying to do it, Danny, that one.
John, thank you for everything. We appreciate the hard work.
Mr. Chairman, I do have one item on my report. I would like John to say for in case there are questions that I can't answer. Um, if you go to page fourteen of your packet, um, page, item five, recently, the board approved extending TDC vendor contracts from December 31st to September 30th. Upon reviewing their original contract, Coastal E. discovered an error. Most of the passed-through fee items are per budget, except for social media campaign management, which is section D. This could cause an issue with the finance department if there's an exact budgeted amount, if, if, I'm sorry, if that exact budgeted amount is exceeded during a campaign. One option to correct this issue would be to add language to the current amendment changing social media campaign management in section D to per budget to align with, with their other fees. Both discussion and action to approve the additional language in that contract amendment. So basically, and, and I talked to John about this, too, and he confirmed for me, those items are passed through. That's, they don't make money from those. Basically, there's a campaign, they turn in the expenses, they, they pay for it ahead of time, and then they're reimbursed for the expenses. The problem is, the finance office may not, could say, well, look, there's a cap here, so we're not going to reimburse you for this particular campaign, even though they were told to do it by the TDC administration. Am I correct, sir?
Yeah, everything's per budget. We increased that line item in the budget this year, matter of fact, um, coming up, so, because the costs have gone up, so that's one of those line items that does get increased each year. Um, miniscule moves, but it does just a pass-through. To be able to get reimbursed, they would need, you know, to be per budget.
So is this, let's make sure we're talking about the same thing. Is this the, uh, is this what's being done on the, on the card? Is that what we're talking about?
I don't know. I, I don't have the knowledge of that.
Because I know that there's been discussion in the past, and maybe that's the reason it was having a problem, that it wasn't in there per budget, that it was written up another way, where things are being done, and that, like, the card only has a certain amount on it. Because the card's how they're using to pay it. I mean, is that the same thing we're talking about?
I don't know. Marone called me about this, I don't-
Yeah, I don't think it has to do with the card, Commissioner. I just think it's a thing where the, they go out and they spend the money to, for the campaign, whatever the advertising campaign is, and in every other case, the, they're, uh, reimbursed those funds. All their other expenses are basically per budget, so the budget controls what it is. This one had a hard number in there, and what they're afraid of, if a, a campaign comes up and they are past the number that's in their agreement, I can't remember what it is, they won't be able to fulfill, or do that campaign, because they'll be restricted, because they won't be reimbursed for that money from TDC that they have expended. So I'm not sure if it's about the card or not. Um, I didn't get it, that impression, and it, it is kind of odd, if you look at their agreement, everything else is per budget, except for that one item.
Okay. So we're just talking about change in the language potentially?
That's it. And there'll be, there'll be, the restriction will be ba, based on the budget that they sent through, not that number that's in the agreement. That's the big change there.
Okay.
And it's something that, you know, with being per budget, that the TDC committee and the county commission would have approved prior to doing it. Like, anything with FCT or anything else, where you just have to have it per budget, from my understanding, what, when Michael called me, I said, yes, that increases, so that should be per budget, just like everything else.
Okay. So, Mr. Shulers?
So move.
All right. So we have a motion to approve this amendment to the language, to be, to read per budget by Commissioner Ward. Who made the second?
Second.
All right. Commissioner Cream, uh, has seconded this motion. Any more discussion before we vote? Attorney Shuler, do you understand what we're voting on?
Yes, sir, I do. I've made my note. I will prepare an amendment based on the board's action.
Yes, sir. Seeing no more discussion, all in favor? Uh, opposed? That is a five-o vote.
Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you, John.
Thank you. Y'all have a wonderful day.
Yep.
So we, are we gonna do, was it at nine-ten?
Yes. So, so we're going to go to your report? Is that what we're gonna?
I was gonna ask, you want to go to Attorney Shuler's item, that nine-ten item that we were supposed to?
The land swap resolution?
Yeah, sorry. Okay.
May I proceed?
Go ahead, sir.
Okay, thank you. Okay, commissioners, this is another step towards the finalization of a proposed land swap of property between Franklin County and Duke Energy Florida. Uh, as, as the board and the public has heard in the past, the county owns one lot in the Bowery section of the city of Apalachicola. That lot, according to the plat, of the city, is thirty-foot wide by eighty-foot long. Uh, the, the Duke Energy parcel is approximately 4.9 acres and is located just west of the boundaries of the city of Apalachicola, so it's located in the unincorporated area of the county. I mean, essentially, it's just adjacent to the old ABC school site. Uh, the, the land swap that the county is considering is authorized by section 125.37 of Florida statute, and it authorizes the exchange of county property not needed for county purposes, which may be to the best interest of the county, exchange for other property which the county may desire to acquire for county purposes. Whereas, uh, it is the opinion of Franklin County that the said lot five, which is the Bowery lot I just described, is, is not needed for county purposes, and that is, is in the best interest of Franklin County to exchange it for other real property owned by Duke Energy for county purposes. And whereas, the proposed exchange of land has been duly advertised once a week for two consecutive weeks, and I did call and speak with the newspaper editor, uh, personally, and confirmed the advertisement on August 28th and September the 4th. And then whereas, the agreement for the exchange of lands is incorporated into this resolution by this reference, and a copy, uh, is attached here, too. Now therefore be it resolved that the preamble here and above is incorporated by this reference, that Franklin County finds that Lot Five is not needed for county purposes, that Franklin County finds that, that it desires to acquire the Duke Energy parcel for county purposes, Franklin County finds it is in the best interest of the county to exchange Lot Five for the Duke Energy parcel, and that Franklin County hereby, hereby authorizes the exchange of Lot Five for the Duke Energy parcel, as the terms of that exchange are set forth in the attached agreement for the exchange of property between Franklin County and Duke Energy adopted the sixteenth day of September 2025. And if the board has no questions for me, then it would be appropriate, uh, to, for a motion to be made either to adopt or not adopt the resolution, but thi, this is a required step to move forward with the land swap.
Pleasure to the board.
So move. Second.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Amerson. That motion has been seconded by Commissioner Cream. Do we have any discussion, commissioners? All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Any opposed? That's a five-o vote.
That concludes all items, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Well, Ms. Aaron, where did you appear from?
Haha, she just sneaked in.
Yeah, you did. Okay, well, good, because we're up to you.
She was out on her feet once.
Yes, she was. It's that, all that, uh, what, what are you taking?
Min, ninja glasses.
Yeah, ninja glasses. Oh, there's ninja glasses. We are up to you, though, Ms. Aaron. We're opening the bids. That was next on the agenda.
Okay, commissioners, um, today, the county is opening bids for the SGI Multi-Use Path Resurfacing Project. This project consists of reclaiming and resurfacing the path from West Third Street East to, uh, to Third Street East. Um, other work will include necessary drainage improvements, upgraded signage and pavement markings, and other safety improvements. Um, and actually, when we conclude opening the bids today, um, they will actually, you all will make a motion to release the bids to Dewberry Engineers for their review and recommendation. And the first respondent today is, um, let's see here, this is coming from Robertson Roberts, located in Tallahassee, Florida. Again, Robertson Roberts of Tallahassee. Total base bid, $217,449.75. Again, $217,449.75. Their bid bond is included. Uh, the next bid is from North Florida Construction, located in Clarksville, Florida. North Florida Construction, located in Clarksville, Florida. Total base bid, $195,375. Bid bond is included. Okay, and the last respondent is, let's see, CW Roberts Contracting Incorporated from Tallahassee, Florida. Again, CW Roberts Contracting from Tallahassee, Florida. Total base bid, $312,699.70. Again, $312,699.70. Their bid bond is included.
All right. So now we just need a motion to turn it over to Dewberry for review?
Correct. So move. Second.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Ward. That motion has been seconded by Commissioner Sanders. Any discussion, commissioners? Or questions? All in favor? Uh, any opposed? That's unanimous. Ms. Aaron, let's move on to your report.
Okay, commissioners, um, I actually, um, have a shorter report with, um, only three action items, um, so that is up to you all. I did, um, receive the ranking results. I actually compiled those this morning, so you all did receive an email with the ranking results in there. Um, and I will say on that, the Omnicom Consulting Group was the highest-ranked firm per, um, six out of seven responsive committee members for the review committee.
So are there any of y'all want to pull, or you, or y'all good with doing one, two, and three as one motion? By concealment.
I'm okay with doing three. All three.
Okay. Well, if nobody wants to pull anything, then I will consider a motion for, to, to approve all three.
So move.
Second.
So we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Amerson. Second, is it Commissioner Sanders, is that you, Commissioner Ward?
A second.
Okay, sorry. Heard one of y'all, just couldn't determine which one it was. Second was by Commissioner Ward. Any discussion? In favor?
Uh-huh.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. All right. Sarah, anything else?
Uh, well, I have, uh, some informational items, if you all would like me to go over those.
Yes, that's fine.
Okay, okay. Um, the Apalachicola Health Department siding project is moving along quickly. Um, most of the old siding has been, uh, removed from the building, and the new wrap has been installed, um, actually on all sides of the building now. Uh, the TDC spending plan revision, the 2025 statutes are now available, um, so we will be scheduling the date for the public hearing for the spending plan amendment, um, and the draft project list is attached for reference. Um, Landarch EMS Station, the interior sheet rock work is now underway. The Restore SGI Stormwater Project is also, uh, underway. Work to focus on the retention pond areas at the center of the island for the first thirty days of the project, to be ready for FDOT's resurfacing of Franklin Boulevard, which is actually coming hot on the heels of our project. Um, District One, District Three, and District Five road paving segments are out to bid, originally bid separately due to concerns regarding the availability of funds and quantity of roadway segments. Re-bid is a single project with a disclosure that not all segments may be awarded due to budgetary constraints. Um, we also have the Restore Countywide Dune Restoration Project, the dune construction at Caribou Beach Park and St. George Island's Lighthouse Park is currently out to bid. The courtroom renovation project is also out to bid. Um, Rio Vista Drive has been resurfaced in District Two. The loading dock at Buddy Ward Seafood Landing Park is now complete. Um, county is submitting the CDBGDR funding request to repair the hurricane damaged section of the SGI Fishing Pier Access Road seawall. Um, there is a required public comment period for the funding application, which ends on September 22nd. Um, the notice is attached, and has also been posted to the county website. Um, it also provides, um, citizens with instructions for how to actually, uh, submit comments to the county on that. Um, the county audit report for fiscal year end September 30th, 2024, has been posted to the county's website and included as an attachment to this report. And the final public hearing to adopt the county's 2526 budget is scheduled for Monday, September 22nd, at 5:15. Um, and that concludes your informational updates.
All right. Anyone have any questions from Mr. Sherman?
Mr. Chairman, I have one question.
Yes.
Commissioner Sanders mentioned something about, uh, communication and public comment. Was that under this, or was that a different part that we talked about with communication?
Under Renee, where you see Renee Brennan?
Okay.
Uh, this side?
Yeah, and Mr. Chairman, when we talk with Renee and I, because I'm so glad to
hear Renee, thank you for coming, um, I want to kind of speak on this consulting stuff, because we're all in here, I don't know if the, the public is aware of all this. So you're waiting on two of the ranking, uh, you know, from-
Um, no. Actually, that was, that was complete. Um, yeah, we did, um, yeah, I, I just emailed that to you all this morning. I actually compiled the ranking results, and we had received, uh, six out of seven. Um, so there was one no response.
Received six out of seven?
We did, um, and so the highest-ranked firm, um, is Omnicom Consulting Group.
The Omnicom.
So that's who we're gonna negotiate with?
Yep, that will be who we proceed to negotiations with.
Yeah, because the public didn't hear, so that's what I'm saying. Some of those people are here to hear that we're gonna move ahead on this communications stuff. That's the reason why I wanted it to be known, that if somebody wants to speak on it, when we get down to Renee, part of the, the meeting, we need to allow them to speak. So, thank you.
Uh, Mr. Sherman, do you have a question? Aaron, uh, batting cage, we were talking about batting cage lighting for, uh, other parks on the TDC report. Did we ever get Vrooman Park under that?
We did. Uh, Vrooman is actually going to be, uh, paid for out of the Parks and Recreation Budget, um, beginning in October.
Thanks.
Mr. Chairman, uh, Aaron, on the batting cage, the, uh, um, at, at, um, Wilson and at Kendrick Park on the surface, oh, is there any way we could possibly start looking at getting that, uh, you know, that indoor-outdoor?
Oh, yes.
Whatever turf we're gonna put in there?
Yes, definitely. Yep.
I believe we'd save some money on baseballs if we get that, that concrete, with a little bit different surface, but, uh, but anyway, I just, it popped in my mind when she mentioned, uh, uh, Vrooman, because I went over and looked at that, and actually spoke with, uh, some of our staff that was out there working on it, and what they've got out there said that that's, that is, you know, a good product, because they can clean it easy and all that. I just went and asked them, I said, hey, you like it or not? But, uh, but anyway.
Okay.
It's just something.
Will do.
All right. Anyone else? All right. Mr. Brown, it's up to you.
All right, commissioners, um, page thirteen, I got three action items.[1714.01]
One is the change that we talked about with the ARPC planning services. We're going from monthly to hourly. Should have an agreement to you at a future meeting. But for now, I wanted to make sure everybody was comfortable with the $80 per hour for planning services. That will be controlled by your county planner, Bree Robinson. She will only be calling on Justin when it's needed. And it's just a few more projects out there left that Justin started that she might need to consult. I'll just, so the second one is a loan agreement for the famous Ben Franklin statue. It's just on, it's just an agreement for insurance coverage and to make sure they maintain the statue while it's in Franklin County. And I'll set on that. Homecoming Parade, which is a standard thing. They're getting ready to do that. So they need time to get their FDOT permits. So they always come to us early because they need our, they need your motion to be able to apply to DOT to get the permit to close 98 for the parade. And yeah, that's all my action items that could be done under consent, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Are y'all good with voting under consent or do you have anything you want to pull and talk about individually? All right, so I've retained the motion under consent.
So move.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Anderson, second by Commissioner Crum. Any discussion before we vote?
I do have a question, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
On this statue, in 10 years, are they going to come take it away or?
No, hopefully they'll renew it so that they continue to be responsible for keeping it clean and keeping it on their insurance. We hope.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous.
All right, Commissioners, item number four to the very bottom of page 13 as we transfer over to page 14. And I would say to be nice because she is listening. Last Friday, Ms. Courtney Bagson submitted her resignation, which is going to be effective October 10th. Funny looking zero. Ms. Bagson was offered employment. I think it's Cloud Permit to the company. That company provides our, that's the company that provides our online code enforcement application. I'll pause there and say I'm really proud of Courtney because basically of all the hats she's worn in the county, starting from permitting clerk to zoning to code enforcement to ship. I think this, it plays her in a unique position where, and her, the technical skills she's learned while she's been here. It put her in a unique position to be able to support a company like Cloud Permit that actually wants to offer, if you guys are looking for, she's hiding over here, that wants to offer this type of service to other cities and counties. So basically, she would be the one, from what I understand, what she told me, doing the training for other city and county staff. But I'm very proud of Courtney to be able to take all that knowledge she's gained and get her, and be able to, you know, get employment like this, to do something, working from home, a little bit of traveling. It's a good thing. I think it's a very good thing. I'm very proud of her. So I'm in the process of determining how to move forward with the SHIP program administrative portion of code compliance. Actually, I could tag that on some of the zoning responsibilities. I didn't realize that Courtney was still doing. So one thing for sure, I will need permission to advertise for clerk. I do not have the exact scope right now today. I have a couple more meetings this week. I should have a scope towards the end of the week. But since we actually don't meet again for three weeks rather than two weeks, I will send you guys a scope. And if you don't have any issues, I'd like to advertise it as soon as possible to get that person on board as soon as possible.
I have a quick question on this.
Yes, sir.
Is this advertising, is this internal and external?
I'll do both at the same time, yes. More than likely though, Commissioner Crum, it will be, I'll probably start off at a base, you know, the base salary and the base position. Depending on the scope, let me say that. My intent is to do that. Let me see what the scope turns out. So it might be unlikely that anybody wants to transfer down. You know what I mean? They'll want to keep what position they have. But we'll see. I'll see. But I will do, to answer your question, yes, I'll do both at the same time.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve this with comment.
Correct. So a motion to approve?
Second.
By Commissioner Ward, second by Commissioner Crum. Go ahead, Commissioner Ward.
I just want to say I did text Courtney. I'm not going to tell you what I texted her, but she has done a phenomenal job. It's always been a pleasure to work with her. I hate to know that she's leaving, but you can never bash someone for trying to improve themselves and make themselves better. So she's definitely going to be missed. And Courtney, I appreciate you and everything that you've done. It's been a pleasure to work for you or with you these past five years or so. So good luck in your future endeavor.
You know what? Let me just unmute her so that, because I think she's trying to be slick where in case she starts to feel sad, she doesn't want you guys to see or to hear. Courtney, I'm going to go ahead and promote you to panelists so we can see and hear you, young lady. And don't, don't, because she can't say no to that request. Let me see if she does.
She's going to not accept your.
She's going to not accept it. No, she did. She did. She did, Commissioner. There she is. I think you got it on mute though. We can't hear you.
You hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Courtney gonna miss you, girl.
Miss you guys too. But I mean, I'll still be in Appalachia. Just, I'll still be helping people just in a different way.
Yeah, I'm going to talk to the cloud permit when we.
Yeah. Threatening their contract, I'll commission. I'm just kidding. I'm just kidding.
Maybe that's a bad thing to get that. You know what I mean?
Yes, ma'am.
Still one of the, one of our employees who knows how to do her job. Not only that, I consider her a very close friend of mine. And we pray together, we cry together, we do everything, you know? And that's kind of like, that's what we are, we're family. Franklin County's a family. But Courtney, I just wish you all the best in the future. And you go out there and make yourself proud because you are a good employee, you're a good person. And I know God is going to keep on blessing you.
Thank you, Ms. Courtney, for that, everything. Go forth and do good.
Congratulations, Ms. Bagson. I want to come see you personally though and talk to you. Coach, you are one of my constituents.
Courtney, I appreciate all your help and all the phone calls that I've called you and the early morning emails you answered. And I hate to see you go, but I completely understand opportunities that we can't turn down.
Yeah, because, Mr. Chairman, what Michael didn't say is Courtney also was the one that made our reservations for our travel out of town. And there were times where I think the chairman and I were at a hotel and they said, well, we don't have any rooms available for you guys. We're like, what? So it's what, 5:00, 6:00 o'clock, we were calling Courtney up, like, what's going on? And we thought we were going to have to sleep in our vehicles that night. So, but yeah, thank you, Courtney.
You're right, Commissioner. There's a lot of little things that she did too that I'm being reminded of that I have to cover in some way, some way.
Blood work, she, you know.
Huh?
Blood work. I mean, she's on everything.
Michael, you got to, you got to step up and do that whole assignment of classes because that website's confusing and Courtney always can do it.
Really? Okay.
Ethics and all that.
I've done mine by the way.
That's a beast. Now to get that website.
It is.
It's easy. I did it.
Well, when you go down to FAC tomorrow afternoon, let him know, you know? Yeah. All right, Courtney, you can cry now. It's okay. Go ahead.
I got my glasses on so you can't.
I know, I realize. Okay.
Thank you, Courtney.
All right. Thank you all so very much. Talking a bit, Courtney, let me do this.
So do we need to vote on that?
Did we vote?
We did not vote. We made motion second and then we were discussing. Any more discussion before we vote? All in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Commissioners, we did item five already. Item six, everything else is informational items. Talk about the crosswalks. We're waiting to hear back from FDOT in Midway about the crosswalks that we submitted.
Well, now, Michael.
Sir?
Which one is in Appalachia? Is that the one that we discussed?
I think it won, yesterday, one across between.
The King and the Police Department?
Yes. Yes, that one.
So I haven't heard anything back.
I reminded Benny of that when I talked to him. So I sure did. So, yeah. I did. But I'm clerk, end of fiscal year meeting. So since we meet, oh. I'm just as bad as the chair. She's not there. I'm talking to people. If it's not there, you don't realize people are here. So there she is. I was just talking to you. Sorry. You can stand here with me. End of year meeting, no need for it. Because we'll do both check runs. You'll approve both on October 1st, which happens to be the next day. So we got that covered this year. Thank you, Commissioner Sanders, for reminding us.
Well, it's something you have to remember.
Yes, ma'am. And you have a bunch of upcoming meeting dates. Monday is the final budget hearing, right here at 5:15. Chairman Jones, you have your town hall meeting on September 30th at 6:00 to discuss the special zoning district for St. George Island. Your next regular meeting is Wednesday, October 1st. Actually, it's three weeks away here. That gentleman that was talking this morning about the Bay and FWC and the opening by next meeting, they have two, two more public workshops in Franklin County. One is actually here on the 30th, I believe Erica said, is at 4:00. The second one is at the Chapman Auditorium. I can't remember what day it is. I will have those dates for you on my report at the next meeting. Because we need to encourage the public, you know, to attend those and voice some of their concerns. Because it's November, we're changing our November meeting date, Commissioners, because FWC's, their meeting is on that first week in November. And I believe that's the final rules that we will be submitted for approval. Correct, Commissioners?
That's right.
So, yeah. So I guess they have two workshops prior to that final meeting. But I'll make a note to add to FWC meetings to my next report. I mean, workshops, not, I mean, not workshops and meeting.
Mr. Chairman, Michael, if either Commissioners are going down the closest into the FWC meeting, they need to make arrangements to be able to spend the night.
Well, that's a drive.
That's a long drive.
Yes.
We already approved that last week.
We approved the expenses. Yeah, I think we need to make the arrangements. So I can get, Courtney, I can get Angela to look at that for you guys and see, you know, where's the closest hotel to wherever the FWC meeting is. Yes.
The other thing, we need to find out which day they're actually going to be, talking about Oysters.
That's a scary thing because you know how they are with the agenda, Mr. Chairman. You know, they wait.
You can't, you can't reserve a hotel room anytime if you don't know if it's going to be the first day or second day.
What we might have to do is reserve and hopefully we get the agenda early enough that we can cancel one of the days if we have to.
Maybe so, yeah.
Yeah, that's, because.
Mr. Chairman, the first FWC meeting is here, it's between 6:00 and 8:00. And the second is October 7th, between 6:00 and 8:00 p.m. at the Chapman Auditorium.
Oh, so the first on the 30th and then the 7th. Okay. Thank you.
Is that 9:30, September 30th?
Yes.
September 30th, no, that's at 4:00. Yes, I'm sorry. I said the date or the time. I'm sorry. 9:30 at 4:00 in here.
Yes.
They had 4:00 to 6:00 unless they changed it.
They may change, I don't know.
Our meeting.
Well, we need to confirm it, I guess.
Yes, but here's the issue now. So that we have the, and I know it was Commissioner Jones, myself, and Bree was attending the town hall. But you have both things going on at the same time.
Yeah. Anyway.
So, yeah. But I'll confirm that time. Thank you, Commissioner.
You're welcome.
And I have one thing that's not on my report. Alligator Point, they wanted you guys to know that the beach cleanup for Alligator Point, Ballpoint, and the Ballpoint State Park, that's going to be on October 25th, starting at 9:00 a.m. They're going to confer with the Sheriff's Department, Brad, and they will with Fonda to get some dumpsters.
All right. Anything else for Mr. Morong before we move on?
Mr. Chairman, I do.
Yep.
Ms. Morong, the railroad, did we ever?
I didn't get it done from Buster. I think he forgot to send it. I'll call him and ask him again.
No problem. And the other thing is yesterday, coming back from Fort St. Joe, there's a pine tree that's fell right there. I mean, it wasn't blocking the road, but it put it back in my mind about those dead pine trees. And that's, there was one that's laid down right there on the, just beyond the county line on the Gulf County side. But we've got multiple pine trees right there around Jewel Road. I'm sure Ms. Gaddy over there can contest to them. And they're big. They're much bigger than what was down right there. But that's going to be an issue if, if that doesn't get addressed.
I'm, I'm, after the meeting, I'll call Benny and have him call you so you can tell me exactly where they are. So, okay?
And I'm, you know, not trying to beat up on Benny, but we have discussed it about every year.
We'll remind him. We'll gently remind him again.
All the way through the county, it's bad. There's some out there towards St. Joseph's Land.
And to be fair, I don't know if it's on state right away or if it's on Deseret right away. But there should be some communication there between the two.
Between those two.
Because that's potentially a bad situation waiting to happen.
It is. Commissioner Sanders, so that you know, the contact I got for the St. Joe Land Company, the contact, they were away on vacation. They should be back this week. They told me that they'll call me as soon as they get back. So just to keep you updated on that.
We're riding good right now, but if we get any kind of a tropical storm and all, I don't want those people to have to go through what they had to go through last year. And I'm not going to, I'm not going to be happy it happened again. When, and the basic thing, when you talk to her, you let her know that we were told by representatives of St. Joe that they would be out there to take care of that problem and they know what the problem is. And they were made aware. They went out there and looked at it. So they need to go and take care of it because if I see any water pouring on those folks' land, even if it is a hole out there, and if it's pouring off St. Joe's land onto them, then I'm going to turn the property owners a loop on St. Joe. We're trying to handle it.
Anything else? Thank you, sir. Turn the show. It's up to you.
Okay, Commissioners, my add-on item for the executive session request. As the board and the public should be made aware, the, at least officially, the public is notified that on August the 20th, on or about that date, the Landing and SGI LLC filed a Burt Harris complaint against Franklin County. In rounded up numbers, the damages they are claiming are $6.7 million based on their allegation that their development application submitted on December the 20th, 2024. Their development application was based on the C3 zoning. I won't get into all the details of the litigation, but they are claiming that the Burt, that the Burt Harris Act has been violated by the county's overlay ordinance and perhaps other allegations as well under Florida Statute 286.011 regarding public meetings. There is an exception that is provided when we are a party or presently a party before a court or administrative agency. You may have what's preferred to as an executive session to meet in private with the individuals authorized by the statute, which essentially are the county commissioners, the county administrator, and your council. A precondition to that meeting being held is I must advise you now at this public meeting that I desire advice concerning this litigation. So what I'm asking for is authorization to schedule the executive session as is authorized by 286.011. When you have that executive session, I won't read everything in this long paragraph, but essentially, the subject matter of that executive session shall be confined to settlement negotiations or strategy sessions related to litigation expenditures. The entire session shall be recorded by a certified court reporter. The county shall give reasonable public notice of the date and time of this attorney-client session and the names of the persons who will be attending the session. That will be done through an advertisement in the newspaper. You will open in a regular county commission meeting like you did today. You will then go through a process to close, announce the executive session. You will then close that public meeting. You will then have the attorney-client executive session. You will then come out of that executive session, reopen the public meeting, and then conclude the public meeting. And then the transcript of that public meeting will be made part of the public record at the conclusion of the litigation. So I'm requesting permission to schedule that executive session as I described it here to you this morning.
Okay.
So move.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Ward?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Sanders. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? That's a five out of five.
Commissioners, as I work on scheduling this executive session, is there a preference that we, for example, in the afternoon of your regular board meeting upcoming, to have the executive session say after lunch? Or do you want me to schedule a special meeting date for that executive session? Does the board have any preference at this point? I mean, typically, we try to not piggyback them on, but just for convenience of the board where your schedules typically are already free during a meeting day. We would then have the executive session in the afternoon of that same day. But that's totally up the board if y'all have something else.
I'm okay with what you've suggested.
I do. Just do it on the same day of our regularly scheduled media.
Do we have any public hearings or anything scheduled for October 1st?
There's not enough time to do it on for the first meeting in October. This is September 6th.
Whatever meeting, okay, is there already a public hearing scheduled for that date?
I have not scheduled any public hearings for that. We're about to discuss code enforcement in a moment. My plan, just based on scheduling requirements, that public hearing cannot be held until the second meeting in October. So my plan is to schedule it then. But what I will do is I will work with outside counsel David Theriak with his schedule and try and, you know, get together a couple of dates for the afternoon and then make sure that's. a, a, a couple of dates for the afternoon, and then make sure that's good with all the commissioners, and we'll get it scheduled, put in the newspaper.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Uh, that, is no time sensitive step on that, on the executive session?
Well, litigation moves at the pace of litigation, um, our answer, uh, the litigation was filed on or about August the twentieth, so our response is due at the end of October, um, the executive session doesn't necessarily have to occur before that response is due, uh, although I will certainly try and do that if I can, if not, then we'll just schedule it as soon as everyone's scheduled will allow.
Mr. Chairman, I will say that, you know, in discussion with our policy that we submitted to F A T for Association of Counties pertaining to this.
Mm-hmm.
Um, they put that under the Finance and Tax Policy Committee, not Health, Safety, and Justice, so if anybody's looking for the policy, it's under the Finance and Tax Policy, um, so just, if, uh, but it is on there, I read through it the other day, and I'm gonna be at the Finance and Tax, even though I'm not on that policy committee, I will be there to answer any questions that the F A T policy committee has.
Okay, cool, we got through the gate, very nice.
That's what I was looking for, I, I couldn't find it, but it's on there.
Yeah, it's on Finance and Tax.
And we can't attend, yeah.
Yeah.
Are we, you know?
We can't vote on it, we can't attend.
May I continue, Mr. Chairman, or do we have a vote?
No, we did not vote yet, we're still in discussion. Any more discussion before we vote? All in favor?
Ah.
Any opposed? That's unanimous.
And my next action item, uh, is requesting authorization to schedule a public hearing for the board to consider a, a possible amendment to the code enforcement ordinance, um, the proposed amendments are outlined in a draft that I've attached to my report, uh, essentially the subject matters of the proposed amendment are the ones that the board has discussed over the course of the last couple of meetings regarding, in particular, dilapidated buildings, uh, abatement of, uh, code enforcement violations by the county, the use of county funds to, uh, pay for the abatement of code enforcement violations, which are not cured within the time set by the special magistrate, uh, added in, although I'm, I'm not sure if it was part of the discussion, but during my research I came across, uh, mowing, because there, there's been some, uh, public health, safety issues with overgrown lots attracting rodents and snakes and, and other vermin, uh, that is a, a hazard to the public health and safety, so those are some of the subject matters that I'll be presenting to the board at that public hearing, uh, as I told you earlier, my plan right now is to schedule that for the second meeting in October.
So moved.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Ward, and Commissioner Sanders has given the second to it. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Okay, item number three is, uh, the recommendation that the board, uh, participate in the Purdue Pharma-Sackler family opioid settlement, as I mentioned to you at the last board meeting, uh, the, there is a September thirtieth deadline for the county to choose to participate, uh, although the exact amount that may be allocated in Franklin County has not been established, but we don't know how many people are participating in that fund, uh, according to the Attorney General's website, uh, Florida's share of that seven point four billion dollar multi-state opioid settlement, uh, our Florida share will be somewhere between two hundred and thirty-three and three hundred and twenty-five million dollars, I suspect, much like the other opioid settlements that we've participated in, it's not like they're going to give the county money, but they will allocate opioid funds, uh, to Franklin County that will be administered at the state level, uh, so my request is twofold, one is to authorize, uh, the county to participate in that settlement, and then secondly, to authorize the chairman or his designee to go online and, and execute all of the, the participation agreements that are required to participate in the settlement.
So, Mr. Chairman, that needs to be two, two separate motions?
I think it can be one motion, same subject matter.
Okay, I'll make that motion.
All right. We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Ward, second from Commissioner Anderson, discussion? Seen none, all in favor?
Ah.
Any opposed? That's a five oh vote.
And then the remaining items are information, um, item number four, there's a follow-up on the Senate Bill one eighty that we've discussed a couple of times, uh, provided the board with the actual, um, a copy of section twenty-eight of Senate Bill one eighty, which establishes the limitation on, on the county's ability to pass any amendments to your comprehensive plan, your land development regulations, development procedures, which make development either more burdensome or restrictive, uh, if, if, for example, the county were to adopt any such, uh, amendment between now and October first of twenty twenty-seven, then they would be in violation of Senate Bill one eighty, and would be declared null and void by the Department of Commerce, or perhaps through litigation, I have included in this, uh, package, a copy of a letter that, uh, Commerce sent to Jackson County declaring their comprehensive plan amendment null and void as being in violation of Senate Bill one eighty, um, the follow-up, the item number five, is information item on the road renaming for the Hidden Beaches subdivision, um, based on Commissioner Sanders', uh, information, and, and thank you for that, at the last meeting, I pulled the plat, the roads are all private, they are not dedicated to the county, uh, done some extensive research on, on that, you know, what is the meaning of, of the county road system, and there are multiple statutory references, but I've, I've read all the statutory references, I've discussed this with your county planner, Bree Robinson, and, uh, based on the totality of all of that investigation, I do not think that these private roads of Hidden Beaches are part of the county road system, therefore the county commission cannot just rename the road as they've requested, so their, their options are to accept the current private road name as it's originally platted, or if they want to go through a, a plat amendment process, that, that's a choice that they can undertake themselves, and then the other information item, and, and I know from talking to Commissioner Sanders, this is apparently already public knowledge, but, uh, F D O T is, is, uh, going through several eminent domain, uh, lawsuits as part of their, uh, road improvement program between Caravelle and East Point, we had, uh, multiple, um, case management conferences about a week or so ago, and I took that opportunity to speak with F D O T council, you know, great, we're, we're litigating this, but when are you gonna start work, and she, she has responded and told me that this should occur, uh, or should begin around September twenty-second.
Yes.
For the road improvements between East Point and Caravelle, so I thought that was a big enough deal, uh, and for the board and, and the public as well, but that's gonna be a really, like, that's been a long time coming.
It has been, and it's gonna be a lot going on at one time.
Yes.
Uh, so they're finishing up what they're doing between the bridges all the way to South Franklin, first, yeah, and then they're going, they're fixing, they're about to start doing concurrently, the project that goes from South Franklin to the Caravelle Bridge, they'll also be doing Franklin Boulevard on the island, very close to when we get the, the pond stuff done.
Yep.
Not to mention the other stuff that's going on with the drainage project, so there'll be a lot going on in that little area.
Yeah, y'all seen the, the traffic light work at East Point, 'cause that's right outside the office, so we, they've been very busy, I'll tell y'all.
Yes.
Yeah, I was, I was coming home from work one night, Mr. Chairman, it was like seven-thirty-ish, eight, and they were out there close to dark, digging and doing all kinds of stuff, so, they're on time crunch, I guess.
If there's any place in the county that needs a traffic light, is that, is that Island Point area?
Oh, yes.
It sure is.
It is.
They just need to keep pushing for the one on Avenue East.
Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report.
Okay, any questions for Attorney Shor? So, Attorney Shor, I would like to ask you something.
Yes, sir.
I know we talked about it the last meeting, uh, with our magistrate, that our next meeting would be in December, we have several ongoing cases that I really think don't need to wait to December to be heard, they've been dragging on for a while now, uh, one that we're having particular issues with is in my district on the south side of the island, uh, they actually have been working on this since, uh, early March, uh, late March, early April, and it's really ready to go to the magistrate, and some of the neighbors around it want to know what's going on, and they're pressing issue, I don't think we need to try to defer to December, so if you could, please contact them and see what alternate dates we can come up with.
Sure, I'll, I'll get with Courtney and Sissy and the magistrate's office and identify the cases and see what we can do.
Yes, sir. Anyone else? All right, that's it for Attorney Shor, let's take a short recess and we'll come back.
Chairman, Commissioner, now back from session. Up next on our agenda, Ms. Renee Brandon from the Sheriff's Office.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Ms. Cheryl and I attended a meeting with the Alligator Point Fire Department. We do have issues with our fire department radio. That is county equipment that is in the tower room at the Sheriff's Office. I just kind of wanted to give you a breakdown. I am Director of Communications for the Sheriff's Office, 911 Coordinator for the County. The calls came, come into our comm center. We dispatch for APD, CPD, Franklin County Sheriff's Office, and six volunteer fire departments, and first responders, and EMS. With that being said, again, fire department equipment that is housed in that tower room is county equipment. When anything happens to that equipment, I have to go to Michael and come before the board. There is not an overseer to that equipment. And you know, you understand what I'm saying? I mean, I, I take, if there's an issue, fire department calls me, we look at this. Williams Communications notified, they come down and say this is the issue, then I come to the board and says this has to be fixed. You approve or not approve? Okay. So where we're at now is our fire department equipment, of course, is adequate. It's out of date. I mean, it just is absolutely out of date. We do not have minimum to none communication with any of the fire departments. What we do is we dispatch through, we have a CAD system called eForce. They have the capability that when we drag that fire department to that call, it sends a text to them. Alligator Point, Kirbel, Dog Island, St. George Island uses eDispatch. Apalachicola uses Who's Responding. This is an app that comes on their cell phones. We are still using the State Emergency Notification System through EOC to dispatch fire departments and first responders to calls. We are at the point now, we've, we've gone to a couple of meetings, we've been in the process of trying to fix this. There is not a fix. We are patching equipment. In my professional, personal opinion, we, we are using funds that need to be, to move us, we need to, that needs to be used to move us in a different direction, to upgrade this equipment, and us to be able to talk to these fire departments and these first responders. We can get them to the call. After we get them to the call, there's no communication. We don't know if they've made it there yet unless they call us on the telephone. And we don't know when they leave this thing. There's, we do not have that capability. Our issue is Sheriff's Office has the state of the art of equipment for our consoles. Fire departments have UHF, VHF. Williams Communications, every time we upgrade our system at the Sheriff's Office, Williams Communication has to go in and build an interface to be able, for our consoles to communicate with fire department. Because you're on two separate systems. We're on 800, they're on UHF, VHF. We need to move forward and to upgrade the fire departments. This is imperative that we do this for our citizens and our visitors to our county, for our citizens' safety, getting people to the calls, being able to do that. Like I said, right now, we're dependent on these apps. They do get the calls, it goes straight to their, their phones. You get an address, type of call. But that's, that's basically all we can do. We can't give them patient information. We can't do, EMS can, can call us and, you know, give us what they have, but we can't, I mean, correction on that. But first responders cannot communicate with us for us to give patient update to EMS. We have communication with EMS, proper communication, because they are on the 800 system, just like the Sheriff's Office. The county has upgraded the EMS units. We really need to upgrade our fire departments. Where we're at right now is the tower at the Sheriff's Office has been deemed unfit, is condemned. So you can't climb it. It needs to, the recommendation was given to the board back after Hurricane Michael, that that, that tower needed to come down. That is where our antennas to our fire department sit. One antenna sits on the, St. George Island antenna sits on the Oyster Radio Tower. We're at the point now that, when we were at that meeting, they tried to move, put an antenna 20 foot up on the current tower that's at the Sheriff's Office. It did not improve coverage at all. It was not high enough. And you cannot, like I said, you cannot climb that tower. I mean, the state won't allow it. So also, St. George Island Fire Department had offered to give the lease to the county on the Oyster Radio Tower. There was a study done by Williams Communications, as they told us they would do in that meeting. There is not enough coverage for that tower. So we would have to go in a complete different direction. And, and where we're at right now is, I think our best bet is waiting on the Triumph for the consultants to come in. I mean, I don't know, I'm here telling you, there is a fix. I mean, there is a patch. But how much money do you want to spend on that going into the future as to a whole new system? So that's, that's where I'm at. Ms. Cheryl and I went to that, that meeting. And, you know, I'm here to do what we need to do for our citizens and our visitors of the county. And that, that's the most important thing. So I'm at the direction of the board as to what do you, you want me to do? I mean, that's your county equipment, but you, you tell me what you want me to do.
Ms. Renee, a couple of questions. When, the last time Williams was here looking at it, and thank you for the way you've summarized all this, because it is helpful, did they give any indication of anything they could do other than just redoing the whole thing? Like an in-between fix?
That's, that's what I'm saying. There is a possibility of taking over that tower from St. George Island Fire Department, assuming that, the county assuming that lease. And then more than likely, what you're going to have to do is assume the lease of the tower for Alligator Point.
Yeah.
Um, correct me if I'm wrong. Um, that they, they could possibly patch that, but it is going to be at a cost, an extensive cost.
So would it be, just spitballing, I'm sorry. Would it be something that we would need to, either ways it'll cost us money. Can we erect a new tower close to the Sheriff's Office and put everything on a new tower? Would that fix it?
This Williams Communication.
That's all good. I kind of figured.
Yes, thank you Chairman and Board. I'm Brian Coker with Williams Communications and President, and also do a lot of the engineering of our projects. You know, there are ways to patch what you currently have. You know, the unfortunate thing is at this stage, the county doesn't own a lot of infrastructure. You don't have tower, towers that are valid. So to maintain the VHF system, we would need to take the Alligator Point and the Oyster Radio Towers, create connectivity between the two of those sites so that we could rebroadcast the same signal out to all of the users. Some of the problems with that is even at Oyster Radio, we would need to change the FCC licensing of that site to get them to match everything else. And it's all doable, it's a little bit of time.
No, that's fine.
So there is a good possibility of doing that. The question is how much money do we want to put towards that in the time? You know, another potential alternative that we did discuss, you know, we could just move fire over to the state system and put them in 800, spend money on new radios for them, get them into new equipment. They can work in multi-mode, and then we can just dispatch as we're doing with fire and EMS, or get EMS and sheriff all on a common platform. You would be spending money towards the future system that those, all that equipment would be compatible going with the new system. So it's, we're in that balancing time of how much do we do for a temporary fix versus how quickly can we get them up and running in something new? And, you know, new radios might be a much quicker solution for them and just move them to 800.
What, what kind of numbers theoretically are we talking about?
You know, estimated numbers on preliminary radios, you know, to do new radios are one and a half to $2 million. On a quick estimate, we just need to get it refined, make sure we got the user count correct everywhere. And if we go the other direction, you know, doing the VHF system and trying to maintain that, you know, quick guess, you know, you would probably be, you know, $150,000, $200,000 to get that connected, if we can get connectivity between the sites.
And see, the connectivity between the two sites, Chairman, still has to be worked out.
Yes. Yeah, I understand that. I understand that. The only thing that, listen, I don't know how the others feel. We just started talking about this. It, it doesn't, to me, the money's really not the issue. I know we had to find a way to pay for it, but I would hate for it to be, my family or a member of my family needing an emergency call and there's not communication for it. So that's, but what I, what I am cautious of, and I agree with what you're saying, if we did buy radios, they could still be used in the future, but we're in line for Triumph to fund all that, not the taxpayer dollars to fund all that. You know, so that's, that's my only deal with that. So, but if there's anything we can do to do another tower, or locate it to another tower, or fix what we have, that, I, I'm good with that. I think we need to pursue that, but that's just me.
Yeah, I'm, I'm happy to proceed and do a more formal study and show what coverage maps would take in the number of sites to keep the VHF active, and we'll get that finalized for you.
Yeah, and, and that is, that would be a necessary step, because the last thing we want to do is say, well, just do it quick as you can, and then when we get through it, it still doesn't work. That would not be good.
I have a question.
Yes.
I remember one point in time when we first got 800 megahertz in Franklin County, that the fire department, well, I know Apalachicola was on it, and I think we had repeater issues over here. I don't know if that's still a big issue. And Renee, Renee, I don't know if you've directed in, you probably can answer that, but I don't know. I guess if we get, hypothetically, we get fire departments on 800, like what he said, we still can use them. I guess we need to ascertain the cost and all that.
Well, and, and to understand the current system that you're utilizing is one that the state of Florida has, you know, paid and installed and maintains that system. You know, their coverage requirements are for portable outdoor in this region, so it doesn't include in-building coverage. So Franklin County does have a need to increase the services and have better coverage. And that's why you're moving down to look at doing a standalone system with, using Triumph funds. So even going to 800 now is not a perfect fix for everything, but at least gets everyone on a common platform. There are some coverage limitations in areas, and Appalachia was one that they had issues in-building. And, and that is a true statement, yes.
Is there a tower here in Appalachia currently still?
Um, the closest, the closest site is East Point.
Still East Point?
Yeah, it's still East Point.
Mr. Chairman, I, personally, I don't like the word patch, because like you said, in an emergent situation, I mean, I don't want our visitors or any, any of our citizens to be compromised. Communication is everything. It is. And how, what is the timeline, I don't know if you can answer this, what is the timeline for, I know we just approved the Triumph First Responder Communication System Design Consultant to come?
Online? To get it online, up and running?
Well, to get the, just to get the consultant and get it all?
Well, the consultant, that will move rather quickly. I, I think the negotiation selection and then, they have to do the engineering and design. That could be a year, you think, for the entire county? Not putting you on the spot because you're not, you know?
Well, the process, the first thing the consultant's going to do is do a needs assessment, determine what the users need, get radio quantity, coverage needs. They'll do a design, they're going to have to do a procurement. You know, that's a six-month process, probably going through that effort. Once a project's awarded, you know, depending on how many sites need to be constructed, you're 18 months, months awarded to probably?
Two, three years.
To three years.
I would two or three years, before the system is up online. And I just, I'm not, please, I'm not the one that's trying to weigh money against life, health, and safety here. But just keep in mind that the, if we spend money now on the 800s, I doubt very much that Triumph is going to reimburse us that money. Unless there's some way we could discuss with them that we are in, well, Cola County, you know, where it's, the system is basically dying in some way, I, I don't know. I, I'll have to check on that.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I don't want to spend money unnecessarily either, as Ms. Brandon stated. I mean, we're spending money on something that we're not going to be able to use in the future anyway. And we're just basically throwing that money away, in my opinion. So I feel like we need to obviously get things done as quickly as possible, but I'd like to do it where we're not having to spend money on something we can't use five years from now. Or something that's not effective, or something that's not, not good. I mean, I know a million dollars versus 150,000 to 200,000, but again, like the Chairman said, that's not a, it's a price on human life, and I don't think that's something that I want in my head.
What, what I don't want, and I heard what he said, I don't want, we spend a million on upgrading the radios, and there's still dead spots, and you still get some complaints. Because then, because, and this is nothing against Alligator Point Fire Department, but you remember when we were spending the money on, on upgrading and the towers and all the issue with, we had an impression that that would have fixed the problem. It fixed the problem there, and there's still a disconnect between the Sheriff's Department and Alligator Point. Nobody's fault, I'm just saying it's how we receive it. So it, Commissioner, I would like Williams Communications to give us two options, basically. What it will take to do the patch, how much it'll cost, how long it'll take to get that done, because that's what we're up against, you know? How much coverage will that provide for us? And then do the same for total radio upgrade, so that you have all the information in front of you as you make your call, which direction to go in. That's, and, you know, and then hopefully, I don't know where the consultant would be. is recommending, and let's see if we can get a fix on it, a plan or something, because this has been going on too long, and it's for all fire departments, not just for one.
And the issue is the tower on the sheriff's, our sheriff's office site, that tower, like I said, it's been condemned, and it is an antenna issue for the whole, and the coverage for the entire county on the current system that they have, UHF/VHF. So, quick, quick, the quicker fix would be to do the two towers, the Oyster Radio Tower, the Alligator Point Tower, and see if there is enough coverage for us to move forward. But, like I said, you know, that, that equipment does not always interface with what we go to, you know, and that's, I want to reiterate, Williams Communication does a wonderful job in building, they have to actually build an interface for the new consoles, which is what the dispatcher uses to page and tone each fire department, and you're, they use that console. So it has to be able to talk to the UHF/VHF system, which is an older, adequate system.
Mr. Chairman, so if we go with the two towers and it's still lacking coverage, are there any towers in between that we could use that, and I'm asking because I don't have a clue?
Yeah, there are several other commercial available towers.
That we can rent space on.
And that, that is a process to go through. We could reach out to the owners and work on getting approval and add more sites as needed. Yeah, that is definitely an option.
If that's the option we go with, is what, what do you need from the county to help push this along to get FCC, I mean, I know that's federal-
So, yeah, so our next steps are, let us finish doing a design on using the VHF system to get you coverage.
Yeah.
And present that to you, and we'll, can give you exact number of sites that would be needed.
That's the quickest, Commissioner.
Maybe it is.
I will support Renee, and that, not to rehash stuff, Commissioners, but after the hurricane, from then, I wanted that tower down. From the last time, we had to pay half a million for the console?
Yeah.
Yeah.
The half a million.
I wanted that tower down, and there was, there was pushback on it, but Commissioners, it needs to go. I'm sorry. It needs to go.
Get it down, then.
So, I want to ask you a question, just to be clear. So we, we'll be able to know ahead of time if the two towers is going to be enough coverage or not?
I can have you a proposal finalized before the next board meeting.
Okay, that'll be good. Yeah, I just want to make sure, too, that we know going into it, two's going to be enough, or we need to add a third, or, you know what I mean?
Correct.
Whatever we need to, whatever action we potentially need to take is to be involved in that, because it's, it is going to take some time, and I am assuming that if we're able to do it this way, that we would take that tower down, correct?
That is correct, yes.
Okay, that wouldn't affect anything, okay. It's a lightning rod, anyway.
It is.
It is, it is a lightning rod.
It's waiting to pop that console any day, is what it's doing.
So, okay, so, okay Renee and, and William, what's your plan of action?
We're, we're going to do the coverage study.
Yes.
And he's going to come back in two weeks. We're going to report to the board as to what the findings are of that, and then it will be your option as to what to move forward, as to move forward today.
Are we still going to get the, the proposal of the 800 that you talked about?
Yeah, we can ask him to do that, you know?
Yeah, we can.
Just have it in front of us? So we have, we have two options. Yes, sir.
So before we finish this, I am sorry, I do have a couple of speaker cards filled out, people who want to speak about this. Mr. President, this is your name?
Yeah, I'm-
Oh, you're with them? Okay, we had a card fill out, sorry.
That might have been someone else's card, it was Brian, I filled one out.
He did?
Was there somebody else?
No, it was just these two.
Yeah.
It was just these two, but-
I just, you-
Come forward, please.
That's Ms. Lyra.
No, she didn't fill one out.
My name is Lyra E. Rath, I'm from Alligator Point and longtime resident, and I truly appreciate this information this morning. This is really what, what we were interested in, is, we all understand the new system's going to be wonderful and awesome, but as it was just said, it's going to take years, and we have an immediate problem right now. And that's why we came to the meeting today, and we truly appreciate Chair, Commissioner Sanders bringing this before the commission and trying to pull, put forward a plan for, that's what we're looking for, is a plan for, for, to fix this. We all know it's going to be a temporary fix, but we need it fixed now, we can't wait three to four years for this to be fixed. So we truly appreciate the commission's time on this subject and the information provided. So thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am.
Can I say something?
Yes.
Renee, I want to tell you how much I appreciate you, because you've taught me more about that radio communication thing this past couple of meetings that we've had, more than what I know, and I know one thing for sure, we can't afford to lose anybody because of that.
No, no, this, this is, it's imperative that we correct the problem.
And I appreciate it. And I'm going to tell the sheriff that he needs to give you an increase.
So, so, Mr. Renee, before you go, I want to ask you another question. I want to make sure I completely understand everything you've said today. So currently, most, all of our volunteer fire departments have a problem communicating.
Yes.
But you also have a problem with first responders.
Which is the same. When I say fire departments, fire departments are your firefighters and your first responders. When I say first responders, I'm meaning the people that go on the medical call.
Yes.
That's what I'm meaning by that. But yes, they are, Appalachian Fire Department has their firefighters and their first responders, and they are both on the same system. So when, just for instance, we get a 911 call in for a medical emergency, just say a traffic crash with injuries, we, we do radio first, which is a page and a tone, and then we have a CAD system, computer-aided dispatch. That call goes into the CAD system as they're paging and toning. When they hit Appalachian Fire Department and put them on that call, it automatically, because Appalachian Fire Department has an app called Who's Responding, when we put them on that call, it automatically sends them a text over their phone of the type of call it is and what is needed, address and that kind of stuff. So that is, and then we also have to go into the state emergency notification system and send it out that way, because there is not proper communication, radio communication. So we're, we're doing this, we're doing, we're dispatching about three different ways, having to do three to four different things, when if we had this radio stuff fixed, you would do that, and it would be simultaneously, and it would, you would cut down in call time.
Yep.
And response time. And it's, it is frustrating, and I understand the frustration from the fire departments, it is very frustrating. It's frustrating for us, because we have those people on the phone that are needing assistance, and we're giving a call out, and the, the radio communication is, is not there. We're doing it basically by the text of the phone and the state emergency notification system.
And with that, Renee, I mean, you're doing those three different things on top of EMS, first, the law enforcement system.
Yes.
And that, that's where stuff gets lost in translation. One of those three things can get lacked, because we've got Signal 4 with, you know, potential to Signal 7.
Yeah.
And there's a lot of stuff going on. But I do want to thank Williams Communication, they always been here for us.
Yeah.
They always come when we respond, and I believe if anybody can get it done, with Williams Communication.
Yeah, I agree.
Cut this off of this.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. So what, the way we do our emergency management with, is it Everbridge?
Mm-hmm.
So is that an option to?
That's what, that's what I'm talking about.
Okay, 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 okay.
The state.
Statement of expectation, okay, gotcha. I just wanted to, for clarification there, okay.
And, and that, that is, we use that, and we use that as a temporary thing after the East Point fires.
Yep.
Right before the East Point fires, we got hit by lightning, and we lost our whole fire department system, and it was repli, the UHF/VHF was replaced at that time.
Yep.
We use that emergency notification system as a backup, and actually, the, I mean, the sole source of the communication at that time, because we didn't have a radio. That has been eight, eight years?
2018, I believe.
Um, seven, eight years, and we were only supposed to use that as a temporary, because that is, that's very time-consuming as well. The ladies that dispatch have to sign into that, there is, you know, there's security things where you have to double, you know?
Authenticating.
And they have to go into their, they have to sign onto that, go into their email, get a code, go back into that, put that code in to be able to dispatch off of that. And it is, you know, it's very time-consuming, and the radio stuff is, it's just imperative that it gets fixed.
Well, I know it's aggravating for, to have to do all that, but the, the bigger part I'm worried about is the time that's been eaten up between when a response could be taking place.
Well, when, when I say frustration, that is, that is the frustration, because you're, you're taking that call, and eight out of the ten, eight out of the nine dispatchers that are up there are just like me, they're born and raised here in Franklin County. We know, we know people.
Yeah.
There's a lot of times that call comes in, and I know who's on the other end of that phone before they even say their name.
Mm-hmm.
And then it, when I say frustration, that is the frustration, because I know that what we're doing right now is too much time.
Yeah.
It's too much time, and like you've said, these are our citizens.
Yep.
These are, these are our people, our visitors, and this, this can't continue, it just can't.
I mean, what happens to other calls when they're, they're dealing with one call, having to do three or four different, and another call is coming in?
Oh, yeah.
That's, that's rough.
Well, that's the other thing, so they dispatch all emergency services from Franklin County.
Yeah.
So if there's a dispatch for FHP, if there's, whatever it is, they're doing it all.
Yeah, I think that's what-
They're doing it all.
That's what Commissioner Crew was referring to, when he says that it's easy to, to lose something, because, you know, you're doing too many things at one time.
Well, and that's the reason why I wanted to bring it to the board, because every one of us has fire department, every one of us has all these situations, every one of us has family, friends, we don't, nothing happened to them. And Renee's telling us, we got a problem, we need to listen to her, she's the expert on it.
Yep.
And that's the reason why I want to come, but I want to say how much I appreciate, you are an expert on it, when you've worked there as long as you have and done it, and I want to thank Hillary and Jay from Williams Communication for doing that and coming, but y'all get on this stuff and, and come back with us and something in tewits that we can put our teeth to.
Okay.
Alligator Point, Mr. David and Matt, thanks y'all for coming, Ms. Lyra and Ms. Carol, because I know it's a very big concern of y'all's that's out there in Point, as it is with the whole county, but thank you. Thank you, Mr. Carol.
I have, I have a question, and Ms. Brandon may be able to answer anybody, I'm just trying to educate myself on this a little more. But with the Sheriff's Department, the tower we got, the Sheriff's Department, that's, that's condemned, correct?
Mm-hmm.
If, if, if it wasn't condemned, and we could go higher, would that be an immediate fix for, for right now?
Well, the bigger issue is, is where the antenna is placed today, there's no easy access to replace the antenna, and that's where the failure is. So we're, we're taking the information from dispatch and using that tower to send it out to the remote locations, and the issue is within that tower and that equipment. That's what's creating the issue right now.
Okay, so I mean-
So we tried doing a, an antenna lower elevation to see if we could get enough signal to Alligator Point, and it did not clean up the problem.
Because you can't climb the tower.
I understand, but I mean, is there any type of lift we could possibly rent?
Yeah, that's what I recommended, Gary, somebody did. Just go ahead and rent a lift, and just, just let them know where, we'll pay for renting the lift. That's the only way to get up there.
Yeah, and that's what I was just saying, something that we could, for right now, I mean, if, if it's that.
Oh, you mean to use it?
But it's, it's a safety concern, right?
I was getting, to get the lift to take it down, Commissioner, to be very honest with you.
Because, because-
No, I understand.
I'm sorry.
I mean, I'm, I'm just thinking about right now.
Yeah.
I mean, it sounds like we got a problem that's going on right now, and we need to, I mean, it very well could be a call coming in.
I don't think it's high enough, actually, Commissioner, to solve the problem.
That, that was the issue, there's-
Yeah.
We couldn't obtain a lift high enough-
Okay.
Yeah.
-to replace that antenna.
And Mr. Chairman, does that, just for clarification, that tower, say, God forbid, lightning were to strike it, that goes to y'all's console in dispatch? So if lightning were to strike, is that the issue that happened before where the whole console was damaged?
Yes.
Okay, so after that incident, Williams Communication came in and done an excessive amount of grounding.
Yeah.
And we no longer have that problem.
Okay, okay.
Under the one day when we had that bad lightning storm, the sheriff calls me, you see what's going on outside? Yeah, Sheriff, I see, yeah. Yeah, and we, we both prayed that, that the console would be hit. That was that, a few months ago, we had a really, really bad lightning storm, yeah.
So, Mr. Chairman, the plan of action is, is that they're going to come back to us in two weeks with some?
Some courts.
Yep.
Okay.
Some options, and you choose one, and we move forward.
Okay.
Sounds good.
No, it would be good. All of us, like, like Ms. Cheryl said, it's not just one or two volunteer fire departments, it's most all of them.
It's everybody.
I, I've, I've been more than once had my local fire chief come in there and say, listen to this, see if you can understand it. You know, no, you can't. You can't at all, so, thank y'all. All right, Dr. Hart and Dr. Conrad?
And Commissioner, Dr. Hart is appearing by Zoom.
Okay.
And Dr. Hart, I guess you can go ahead and turn your camera on, and unmute if you'd like.
Let me just get started. David Walker, CEO, Weems Memorial Hospital, have Dr. Hart on the call, as well as Dr. Conrad, Michael Cozart here, to talk about Southland Transition Services. Many of you know that Dr. Hart started our ED Physician Services back in 2011 here, and now they're looking to transition that. So I turned over Dr. Hart, Dr. Conrad, and then we'll talk about our plan before.
Good morning, I'm Patrick Conrad, I'm the Medical Director for the Williams Emergency Department. I'm going to defer to Dr. Hart, if he's on here right now, he can start talking, or I can. Call you up?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not very technically sound, and I'm using this on my Zoom for the first time, so you'll have to apologize, or I have to apologize, I don't know what I'm doing. So anyway, Pat, if you want to start, okay, what exactly does that, I mean, first of all, what is asked, exactly does everybody know in that way, so I'm not recapping everything about what's, what the plans are?
All we have is, it says, medical services transition.
Okay, all right, so I'll start from the beginning. Essentially, what I've decided is, a situation is basically dissolving Southland, remain, have all of the providers stay where they're at, there'll be no loss of coverage, everybody that's working there loves working there, including myself. The hospital will take over the billing, the insurance, and, and there should be no change whatsoever in a position that I support wholeheartedly, decreases the cost on the hospital, and they can actually, it's more favorable to them adding the providers to the cost report, there's just a lot of financial benefits of this, and that's the, that's the nuts and the bolts of it, that, the, the hope is that you see no change whatsoever, and it's something that I support.
Okay, thank you, Doctor. Turn to the shore.
Yes.
The current contract we have with Southland, what is, how, how would that work out? Is it a 90-day termination, is it a?
I think that, I, I don't know the answer to that, first of all, but the, the solution is if there's going to be a mutual termination, everyone can agree to that, regardless of what the terms of the contract says.
That's what I wanted to know.
Presently, all the physicians are 1099 independent contractors with Southland. We will now be 1099 independent contractors with Weems.
Mr. Chairman, so basically, all that's changing is really essentially just the name.
Correct.
You're not going to be Southland anymore, that corporation that you guys work under right now is dissolving, so now it will go under Weems, and you guys will be independent So now it will go under Weems and you guys will be independent contractors, not employees of Weems, just independent contractors.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I would like to say, hey, Dr. Hart, uh, I worked with Dr. Hart back when I worked at Weems many, many, many years ago. It's been a while since I've seen you. It's good to see you, or well, not see you, but hear you.
Are you saying my camera is not on?
That's what we're saying. That's what we're saying. It's okay.
Okay, I, I apologize. You're not missing anything from, I'm parked on the side of the road.
Now, so good to hear from you, Dr. Hart. But I've got some, I got to, I got to say something right here. And if I cry, just don't worry about it, okay? I want y'all to know, this is the man that helped God save my life when I went to that little hospital. He says, Cheryl, what's wrong? I can't breathe, you know? And, and, and I'm making light of it now, but it was a very serious situation. And I feel honored to know Dr. Conrad. I know he was a good doctor before, but he's even a better one now because he helped save my life. Actually, and that's no, that's no pun intended. He actually saved my life and that ambulance service, taking me up there and didn't question me. So if he says he needs something, we're going to do it. But, um, Dr. Hart, you've always been good to Franklin County as long as you've been here. I've known you for so many years. I mean, you're the only doctor that I've ever had a, besides Dr. Sands many years ago. You're the only doctor I've ever had a house call from, I can tell you that. But, uh, I, I appreciate you, um, doing the service that you've done. And, and I can remember when you formed Southland and it has always done us well with the quality doctors that we had. Um, and, and I mean, that's what it's all about. It's about somebody who can take care of you when you go there with an emergency. And Dr. Conrad, you knew exactly what to do for me and you saved my life, basically. And I'll always be indebted for you and I pray for you every day because you know what you're doing.
I'll take them. Thank you.
So, quick question. I just want to make sure we're all moving along the same plan here. So we're transitioning from one to another. Uh, Mr. David, are, are all these physicians, you said they're independent contractors? Are they all going to have some kind of contract with Weems or?
Yeah, we have a, yeah, we have a standard agreement and it'd be, it'd be the same agreement they have pretty much now that they have with Southland. They have with the Weems. Attorney Schuler's reviewing that agreement just to make sure, you know, it's the same thing in there. Um, and so we'll review that. So they'll be independent contractors, vendors with us, you know? Um, and I think in the long run, I think it'd be better for the hospital, just to be honest with you. Just give us more ownership, you know, of the physicians, you know, that we're serving. And we probably have about five physicians really that are serving our hospitals on a consistent basis.
So, Attorney Schuler, is there going to be any actions required by this board for this transition?
Uh, yes, there will need to be an authorization to grant the request as they've described it here today. And then for, uh, since these contracts are going to be, I'm assuming over $50,000, the board has a policy that you have to approve contracts that have an annual value over $50,000. So you'll need to approve the new contracts contingent upon attorney's review.
Okay.
Let me ask a question.
Yes.
David.
Mm-hmm.
So, we paid South, or, or Weems paid Southland
Yes.
for the doctors, right? Okay, now that they're coming underneath Weems, it's about the dollars.
Yes.
See, where are the dollars coming from?
No, the, the dollars will, will be coming from Weems and then we'll make up that.
So it's not going to be coming from the healthcare trust fund?
No, 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 that's internal. Yeah, yeah, nothing.
I'm just making sure.
Okay, the, the only thing that is coming, for example, we get healthcare trust fund, we get about, what, 1.5 million, you know, here? Um, our salaries internally is about five to six million dollars. So that healthcare trust fund goes towards some of the salaries of the employees there. Um, so, you know, the trust fund won't even cover what we're paying the physicians. Um, it'll be kind of like a budget neutral, you know, we, uh, David Bowden did a perform on some numbers. It'll be kind of like budget neutral for us. You know, we may come out a little bit better because we can probably bill more insurances, you know, with, um, with individuals that come through the ED that Southland did with their particular contract. So it's kind of like a budget neutral situation. We should be paying, like I said, we may, we may come out just a little bit more financially better. You know, not too much, but just a little bit.
Well, if we're removing a contract that had administrative fees, we should come out cheaper.
Yeah.
Yeah, but you, yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, you, you come out cheaper, yeah. But it, it won't be like a big, big difference, but just a little bit. About $11,000 or more, you know, I'm thinking, you know, as we look at those numbers. And then the billing also would pick up because like I say, Southland, I think they have about four insurances that they probably cover, you know, through the, uh, through their billing. Of course, we have more than that. So when individuals come through the ED, we bill for any kind of insurance per se. So we'll pick up something in that area as well. Then you have the cost report. That's, that's your, um, your, um, in, like your income tax return for individuals for hospitals, cost report. So we can pick up, we'll probably pick up some additional dollars on that, in that area as well. Um, now, if Southland, if we were not bringing them on as independent contractors, if they're, if we were bringing them on as employees of Weems, and then, you know, there'll be no need for a contract approval per se because they'll be employees. But they're not going to be employees. They'll be like a independent vendor.
So, Mr. Chairman, my question, would, would each physician have an individual contract?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, yes. That's what they, that's what they have now. Right now, they have individual, um, contracts with Southland. Each one, each one of the physicians there.
Okay. And then the, the, like the payroll, all, all that, like, uh, Commissioner, or Chairman Jones was, uh, alluding to the, the admin. We, we will be doing that. Will, will Alliance be doing that or will?
No, 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 we're, we're doing that. Yeah, yeah, that's all, that's all internally. Alliance won't do anything. Uh, Alliance won't do anything with this. This is all our payroll people, our vendor people will pay that out on a monthly basis, like, like we do with all, all the vendors that we have.
Then there, there should be some substantial, um, savings there.
Yeah.
Just due to the fact that, that obviously, you know, Southland had to, had, had admin to do all the payroll process and all the other stuff. So we should, and, and.
Yeah, we have some savings. I'm just, I, I don't think it'd be like a $50,000 savings kind of deal, but it'd be maybe 12, 15, 20. I'm just thinking out loud. It should be some savings to us, you know?
So.
And it could be more than that after the end of the year.
That'd be, that'd be interesting to see because I don't believe Dr. Hart was doing it all for $11,000 a year. I can tell you that.
No, 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 we're talking about, you know, as we look at, as we look at the billing, as, as we look at all our different costs. And then how much we're billing, you know, you know, how much we can collect. Um, the performance that David Bowden did, it was like a budget neutral that, that we will pick up like $11,000 after all, all that was said and done. But what I'm saying is that, um, probably at the end of the year, we may see even a, a bigger pickup because we got, you know, we can bill more insurances
Yeah.
per se, you know, that will bring more money in. As well as our cost report, we'll get some pickup on that. You know, but that, that wasn't really affecting, you know, what we.
Well, that's an ability to bring back revenue in that you couldn't do before.
Correct.
However, I'm talking about the money you're spending going out the door the first time. That's what I'm referring to. But anyway, would, so will this come back to us or you're just reviewing and signing? What are you asking us to do?
That's at the discretion of the board. I, what, what's the effective date of the transition?
Yeah, yeah, we want to transition October, around October 1, try to transition, try to get the, um, the doctors on our payroll. You know, as a vendor, October 1. And so it can be after, after the board meeting.
Board meeting's on October 1, so why don't I just bring it back to the board so you have a chance to look at it?
Attorney Schuler, a motion and a vote?
Um, you said about five different doctors, correct? Five doctors?
Yeah, about five or six doctors.
So is that five different contracts?
Yes.
Independently as well?
There'll, there'll be the same terms. There, there won't be any difference between the terms, but other than the names.
Okay.
I'm assuming these will be in the names of the individual doctors or their, their corporations, I mean?
No, no.
Individuals?
Yeah, individuals, yeah, yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I have one quick question.
Yep.
Uh, hospital board wise, uh, this one I'm sure was discussed with the hospital board and, and they are?
Well, we talked, we spoke with each, each, each hospital board member was spoken to about this. You know, the, the change, what was going on here. Because our hospital board meetings at the end of, at the end of this month.
I got you.
Well, next week, brother.
Okay. So you need a motion and a vote to proceed?
I would appreciate, yeah, this is a big deal. So, yes.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion to proceed with.
Okay, so we'd have a motion to proceed by Commissioner Ward.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Crew in the discussion. So under discussion, I just want to ask, has the hospital board voted on this?
No, the hospital board hadn't voted on this yet because really anything over $50,000, hospital board, they can make a recommendation for, but it has to come back here.
But, but.
But each, but each member was, spoke, each member was talking.
Yeah, and I think, Mr. Chairman, what you're saying is that they don't meet till the end of the month. So we don't want to delay anything either. So that was my thought.
I, I wanted to agree with that, given that the, the calendar is moving. We want to make sure there's no break in continuity at all.
And we will bring it, also discuss this with the hospital board next Thursday as well. But each member of the hospital board was discussed about this.
Okay, so how long has this been in the works? Just, just on a personal note?
But we just found out about it, maybe.
Like last week?
Yeah, but we, yeah, this.
We're, we're trying to do this all in a three-week time period. That's pretty rough.
Yeah. Well, we figured that if we do it, uh, either, must we, must we get the physicians on board and get them potential, potential with our insurances? You know, we can always go and back deal from the date that it started, per se.
Okay. Any other discussion before we vote?
Uh, uh, did we make a motion?
I thought we did.
Okay, Southland.
You have a motion, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That's your name, sir. Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.
Mr. James, posting?
He's going to want some money today.
It don't matter. You'll get it to 36 months from now when you get to doing this thing.
Good morning, Commissioners. I stand for you today.
Before you start, how long is it going to take to get this ambulance?
Uh, we're looking at, last I talked to them, uh, Fraser, it was 16 to 20 months, but they're expecting that to be lowered when they open their second factory, uh, the first quarter of 2026.
Good, James, sorry.
What was it, 36 months? Last time?
So I'm, I'm here to make a purchase, a request for purchase of a 2026 Fraser-built ambulance. And the, uh, this will be the, for the quote I gave you, the equipment included any quotes, including the Stryker Power Stretcher Power Load System, which includes the, the brand new stretcher and the sled. Uh, total amount requested is $379,869.71.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Yep.
Uh, and I've asked, I think I asked Aaron this. This is when, this was first going to come before us. Fraser is, is that like a sole source provider? So there's no other way we can go negotiate or go to another provider and try to get a cheaper price? This is a sole source, so we don't have to go out for bids?
It is sole source. I did do, I did after the, uh, Weems board meeting, they asked if I would go ahead and do a couple more quotes and I did. Uh, the other quotes I did get with all this same equipment, same exact everything with the, the Braun ambulance, that is one of them. And its total was 405,000, $479.71. And I also did Osage ambulance, which, uh, again, was 409,727.71.
Okay. Thank you for, for that clarification.
I got one question.
Yep.
So with this one, uh, Mr. Olson, this include a stretcher, correct?
Yes, yes, sir. This, this price includes a stretcher.
Separately for the stretcher, Stryker one?
Yes, it's, it's a separate invoice or a separate quote, but I included that in the total overall price that I just quoted.
So the Stryker is going on a different truck?
No, it's the same, it's the Stryker for this ambulance.
Okay, that's what I, okay. I called you about it, but I was just, just hitting you in the hair.
And, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
And the other trucks that we have, other vehicles, they're all Frasers, correct?
Yes, sir. We've, we've had Fraser for the last 16, 17 years.
Because I believe in some of the discussions I've had, I think we can cross parts, uh, you know, makes it a little more streamlined.
Correct.
Yeah.
How is durability of Frasers?
They're good. They're, they're really good, um, crash tests and everything. They're, they're one of the best.
The white ones, are they Frasers?
They are.
Okay.
All of ours, except the only, only one truck we have was the, is one of our 2019s, which is a backup rig right now. It was, it's a Braun ambulance, which we got that during, uh, COVID, with COVID money.
Commissioner Amos and Commissioner Ward, I see Louis at the edge of his chair out there. I think he wanted to explain because this, this also came up at the, the hospital board meeting. I was, actually was here, so I was paying attention. And, um, I don't pay attention. Anyway, so, uh, the thing was to be consistent with the units and that's why I think they're going for Fraser and there's a whole, uh, they had a rather lengthy explanation as to why they'd like to continue with the same company, how it benefits the, that, that department.
Uh, uh, Mr. Chairman, I will say that, um, and James and Louis, if you want to say something, this does include, it comes with the, obviously not the equipment. I know the stretcher's included, but we're talking about generators and things like that that runs the ambulance.
That's included.
Everything that you need is included in this, including the $300 cup holder. I'm just throwing, I just, it's amazing what they want to charge for, for every little thing. Um, but, um, but I just want to make sure that this, this by us voting, hopefully in favor of this today, you guys have what you need to be able to provide safety to the, again, minus the, you know, intubation equipment, the, uh, life packs, whatever. But this is what we need to, what's the, uh, the youngest ambulance in y'all's fleet right now? How many miles does it have on it?
The youngest?
Youngest.
The 2023, I think, um, I'm, I'm not sure exactly. We're, we're probably approaching 30, 35,000 on the 2023s. If not more, I'm not sure exactly.
I mean, as long as no other Commissioner has any comments, concerns, Chairman, I'll, I'll make a motion to approve this. Now, uh, one more question. I'm, I'm making a motion and I'll ask him a question.
Okay, so a motion to approve by Commissioner Ward.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Crew. Commissioner Ward, go ahead.
So this is coming out of the healthcare, because the ambulance is funded through our healthcare trust fund. So this is coming out of that fund. Okay, that's what I wanted to know.
That's what I understand, yeah.
My, I think all the ambulances, other than to the extent you've had grant funds, I think they've always been paid for out of the capital outlay or some, uh, portion of the, uh, trust fund.
And I, I'm sorry, I was looking at Michael Morone. I should have been looking to see if Aaron was up there.
No, I think you're back in these points now, watching.
Yes.
Okay, that answered my question. Thank you.
So they got that cup holder to hold that, uh, O2 cylinder change in which is almost $200.
$375 armrest.
Yeah.
See, I was picking it last night. I was like.
You were the only one that was looking at stuff like that, I can assure you.
That is hilarious.
Uh, any other discussion before we vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's your name, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. James.
Do you want to take a quick break? So a break is set up?
Let's do that.